To tax you and spend this money. And this is what we did with it. Here are the schools that got renovated. Here are the schools that were built. Here's what we're going forward and do. How can we both help you with spreading that message? Do you have everything? I think so. If you guys have questions, I'm totally willing to answer them too.
Thank you. Questions from anyone? Well, thank you for your service on CBAC and everything that you do. It's a really interesting question. You know, how do we tell the story of Phase 1? And I don't know. What is that historical knowledge, if anybody knows? When you do complete an entire bond, do you do a celebration? Or do you just do videos? Or what? I mean, Mark Summers, what do we do?
It's a great question.[50.14][50.14][laughing] We can talk about it tomorrow. And we can reach out to a large group of folks and get different and present some options to the board on how you want to commemorate the end of Phase 1.
I think that would be great.
Video montage.
Perfect. All right. Well, did you want to? Well, I know it's going to be a stretch with Phase 2 with inclusion because a lot of that is mechanical. But continue to push on that. I'm assuming the Jacobs Academy is getting ready to hit the ground rolling and we can move forward. And I would love, the next time you guys present, if we have any information on the student groups, so what we're working with students in the classroom or on those sites, on really having some students show up and hear their testimonials about it. All righty. Well, thank you. Up next is budget amendment. Mr. Roberts, this is, you saved the best for last.
Good evening. President Snow, Superintendent Logan, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening regarding the district's proposed budget amendment. As we first discussed with the board last November, we finished the prior fiscal year with reserves slightly above 26, or excuse me, 27 percent. State statute sets an allowable reserve at 20 percent for districts our size. When excess reserves exist, the district policy requires funds be utilized for one-time, non-recurring expenses. A budget amendment in the current year will allow the district to work down these balances by the end of the current fiscal year. I'd like to briefly talk about some of the reasons why the reserves were a little bit higher than anticipated at the end of last year. Cost reductions two years ago created a more cautious approach to spending last year. District leadership also began reviewing major spending with an eye toward maximizing student performance and outcomes. And certain spending was deferred into this year to ensure that we had alignment with the current new strategic plan of action. The proposed spending in this amendment is directly aligned to the new strategic plan of action. Last fall, leadership began identifying meaningful initiatives principally focused on improving student outcomes. Additional benefits of these projects were focused on enhancing overall performance, improving curriculum effectiveness, upgrading student learning environments, and upgrading infrastructure. There's a total of 10 projects totaling $37 million, and I'd like to briefly run through those right now. The funds for the first project will be used to acquire classroom educational materials designed to improve the effectiveness of early literacy instruction. This directly supports the district's early literacy focus and provides improvements to all early childhood through third grade classrooms. This is one of the projects mentioned earlier that will take some of the pressure off teacher-purchased materials and items in classrooms. Our second project supports the new ELA adoption. Funds will be used to support this adoption in the current year. The dollars allowed will allow us to purchase additional supplemental materials to support the curriculum and complete the ELA curriculum in the current year. It allows for the hiring of curriculum consultants and provides for teacher professional development to support the curriculum during the year of implementation. These resources and materials are expected to greatly improve the effectiveness and implementation of this curriculum. The current curriculum, this third project, the current curriculum for K-5 math and science expires this year. We're at the end of a seven- or eight-year adoption. The funds for this extension will extend the math program another two years and science for another three. The costs are primarily for consumables, workbooks, and other materials. And this extension allows the district to take a more balanced and phased approach to curriculum adoptions in the current year. It also ensures that there's adequate staff resources available for each of those adoptions in years to come. The next project we've identified involves technology. These funds are for additional technology in all elementary schools throughout the district. Our team has determined that a four-to-one ratio, students to devices, is optimal for learning. These additional and upgraded devices will provide several benefits. First, increase the students' access to technology. Second, improve the effectiveness of instruction in the classroom. And third, will facilitate the administration of student assessments. By purchasing these devices as opposed to a lease term, which is what our original plan was, the district will save over $200,000 in financing costs over the next three years. Funds for the next initiative will be used to purchase a standardized list of multisensory items for all pre-K through third grade classrooms. The items will support early childhood skills development through the use of five senses. Materials will support language development, cognitive growth, motor skills development, and problem-solving skills development in early childhood. The investment's expected to decrease teacher interventions, increase instructional time, and reduce the frequency of teachers using their own money to purchase materials for the classroom. Three schools have been identified as turnaround schools in this coming year. These schools are showing where and are in need of a refresh. The spending in this project will ensure that we can add fresh paint, new carpet, upgraded lighting, HVAC maintenance, and drywall repairs in these three schools. Educational spaces that are bright, vibrant, and have proper temperature control have been shown to improve student focus and increase learning. With the next project, the district plans to replace current security systems and devices throughout schools within the district. This technology will provide a newer, more modern system for the district to utilize. These investments will improve the district's security systems' overall reliability, quality, and functionality. The security footprint will be standardized and implemented at each school and district-owned property throughout the city. Additional hardware and software is needed to enhance and strengthen the district's current network. Servers will be added for additional storage, while security software will help malware intrusion and identify intrusion attempts on all platforms throughout our technology. Additionally, these funds will support upgrading broadband bandwidth in all elementary schools, increasing speeds from 1 to 10 gig in all elementary classrooms. The increased speeds will greatly increase the efficiency of instruction and improve the reliability of student access. The next project relates to student transportation. Nearly 2/3 of the district's 273-owned buses are over 10 years old and have in excess of 150,000 miles on them. The 15 buses identified within this initiative were all acquired in 2004, have at least 191,000 miles, have excessive rusting, and high ongoing maintenance costs. Reliability and the high cost to maintain these vehicles are key considerations for this ask. Additionally, some monies will be set aside to ensure the "here comes the bus" will be added to all district-owned buses. And the final project involves kind of operational support and maintenance. Several maintenance vehicles are currently in disrepair and need to be replaced. Vehicles are used throughout the district for transporting student lunches from satellite kitchens to school locations. They're used to move equipment and mail around the district and are used for ongoing repair and maintenance activities at district-owned properties. Staff safety, vehicle reliability, and high maintenance costs were all considerations for this project. Additionally, some monies are going to be set aside for 12 schools that are in need of elevator sump pump repairs, and these monies will resolve those issues. As far as next steps, we're planning a public hearing prior to the next board meeting in about two and a half weeks. Should the board approve the budget amendments at that time, there are some ongoing administrative items that the district will have in refiling amended budget paperwork with Douglas and Sarpy Counties and the state of Nebraska. I'd like to thank you for your time this evening, and we'd be happy to take any questions that you may have.
All righty. Any questions? Mrs. Gotti?
And I'm trying to remember, but I think when we had the audit presentation, the overage was, was it $42 million?
It was $42 million at the time, yes.
So can you explain to us that difference between the 42 and the 37?
Yeah, over the passage of time, the way the math works, it's the allowable limit of 20 percent times the prior year general fund operating expenses. So with the passage of another year, the 2019-20 year, our budget increased by about $50 million. So 20 percent of that is now allowable to retain in the reserve, meaning that we have less than the $42 million that's required to be spent.
Thank you. I've had questions on, is this what this relates to? And so I think it's helpful for you to explain that to us. I appreciate that.
You bet.
Ms. Cassidy?
Thank you. I don't really have a question, just kind of a quick statement. Just, it's important, I think, for everyone to know that we, as a board, all met and did small groups going over this. So we shouldn't have a lot of questions. And it's getting late, so we probably don't, right?[732.82][732.82][laughing] But I just wanted to say personally that I love this list, the fact that, I don't know how many parties were involved in making this list, but I love how diverse it is, from security to buses to simple things like, what was it, 1.5 million going towards the three schools? Just for paint and things simple in nature that can help these students to learn better. So I just want to say that I'm very pleased with the list, and I appreciate all of the people, whoever you were, that were involved in the choices. Okay, thank you.
There was a great team involved over the last three or four months to come to this list.
All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. And I'm assuming we'll have that hearing at 6:30 and board meeting directly following, or 6:00. So I have the hearing at 6:00. So you have to change that on our calendars because it's not on there yet. All right. So that's, receipt of reports. We have K-1, his district English learner and refugee report, and the OSU's audit, Dr. Holman.
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, and legal counsel, security, pending litigation, and legal advice.
There's a motion to go into closed session by Dr. Holman. Is there a second?
Aye.
Second by?[836.35][836.35][laughing]
We said second and aye.
Fair. Mr. Smith? Can you take back your, take back your?
Vote, please. I'll take back my vote.
All right. Redo your motion.
I withdraw my motion.
Withdraw your motion and redo it again.
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, and legal counsel, real estate, security, pending litigation, and legal advice.
There's a motion on the floor to go into closed session by Dr. Holman.
Second.
Second by Ms. Crackey. Discussion, roll call, please. Ryan?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Snipe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Gotti? Holman?
Aye.
Crackey?
Aye.
Pullman?
Aye.
Ada?
She carries. Let me remind the board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interests and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, and legal counsel. And security, pending litigation, legal advice, and real estate. Let the record reflect the board won in the closed session at 9:32.
You would get more people in our community showing up about us putting it in our schools than people saying we're not putting it in because already cops do have...
It's been an easy ride so far, so.
All righty. Great meeting. All right. You put yourself in a...